Good evening. Today is Tuesday, June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next Board of Education meeting is scheduled on Tuesday, July twenty second at eight thirty a.m. in the Board of Education meeting room. May I have a motion to appoint Sarah Parent in her capacity as Secretary to preside over tonight's meeting since I'm not able to be there in person tonight? May I have a motion?
Donna's moved.
John, second.
Yeah, I second it.
Sarah, you start first. All in favor?
It's unanimous.
Thank you. Sarah, you're presiding.
All right. Thank you, Robyn. I am going to start by making a motion to add Agenda Item seven A, with discussion and possible action on the Darien School Custodians Union contract for July first, two thousand twenty five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight. May I have a second? Joanna has a second. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Okay, we'll move to public comment pass, please.
Good evening. If anybody in person or online would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium or use the raised hand icon and wait to be recognized. Once recognized, please state your name and address for the record and note that you will have up to three minutes to comment. We have nobody in the audience or online.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to quite turn the mic over to you yet, Ellen. I just wanted to take a moment to say that we had a wonderful celebration in honor of you last week. We had some teachers, some staff, administrators, and some of your family and friends, which was very special to hear everybody speak so kindly and wisely about you. So on behalf of the entire Board of Education, these past six years have been a wild ride, but your leadership has left a lasting legacy on our schools, our students, and the entire community of Darien. During your time as Superintendent, you guided the district through some of its most challenging and transformative years. Your leadership during the COVID nineteen pandemic was nothing short of extraordinary. In the face of uncertainty and disruption, you led with compassion, resilience, and clarity. Your commitment to student learning, staff well-being, and community transparency helped us navigate an unprecedented experience while keeping our focus on future. And your puppetry along with Dr. Adley's neighborhood will always be remembered fondly. Under your direction, we began several major construction projects that will modernize our facilities and create safer, more inspiring spaces for learning. These projects will serve generations of students, and they will stand as a testament to your vision and your dedication to our children. And what stands out most to me is the love for the children and the students of Darien. You ensure that they were at the forefront of every conversation for that. I thank you. Ellen, you leave behind a district that is stronger, more resilient, and better prepared to meet the challenges ahead. While we will miss your steady presence, we know that the foundation you have built will continue to support us for years to come. We wish you all the best in your next job. On behalf of all of us.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Now it's your turn. For the last.
For the last one, yes, I can say that. That's okay. Just want to congratulate the kids. It seems like it's over, right? They're never going to move on. But we paused just to appreciate the wonderful ceremonies that took place, stepping up, moving up, Fitch Academy, and obviously the pinnacle of the school system, the high school graduation. All the graduations were beautiful. Congratulations to you, David, and being there for the graduation. They were just, they were just beautiful, every single one of them. So thank you to the administration, the board members, our staff, and the parents who actually rallied to put these events on. It's just spectacular and very moving and very touching. I will say that class is a very graceful class, gracious class, and classy, actually. Just very respectful in all ways, and it was just, it was just a beautiful testament. So it was beautiful that we could get outside. We had a few various raindrops to finish, and we were ready to go. So congratulations to the kids and wherever their dreams are actually taking them. Darien Summer School and E S Y opened up. We opened up around about the same numbers. There's fourteen fifty versus fifteen hundred last year, but still, the kids still come in the last two days. So we have a couple of classes still to open up and participate in. And we're probably the same for E S Y around three seventy, three seventy-five, or something like that. That will settle down at that. It went very smoothly with our own transportation. And thank you to the staff and the kids and the parents for working with the heat the past couple of days. Dr. Byrne has been in the district a couple of times. He goes to the end of this particular week in New York, so he has been transitioning with me and with some of other staff members. He's also been around all of the buildings. Teachers' negotiation commences this summer, so when we get a wee bit further in the agenda for the summer retreat, I'll maybe talk a wee bit about it there because it might be an opportunity for the board to discuss something like that. And then I want to run by a date or two, but I'll just leave it. We have to find, bottom line is, we have to find another date to meet with the Board of Finance. The Board of Education has to meet with the Board of Finance in advance of the kickoff of the negotiation process. So the retreat is for the twenty second, and we have a wee opportunity to talk about that later on. I will be asking for actually the twenty-fifth, how that, how your calendars look for the twenty-fifth potentially, but we'll get there. And finally, as you've mentioned, certainly we will miss me if I didn't just take the opportunity to thank everyone here and just share some basic comments that I, some of them I shared the other night. I'll tell you that it's been my greatest professional honor and privilege, not just to end my career here, but to be here as a Superintendent of Schools. And I want to thank all the board members over the years. Special shout out to some of the charge, Tara and Doug and Jill, for your leadership and friendship. But it applies to all the board members. It's been invaluable and very much appreciated. Appreciate your friendship and your professional support. Thank you also to the Cabinet members, members of a wonderful, to use Cheryl's words, extraordinary team. Thank you to the Cabinet members, to my Minister of Staff, my teaching staff, our support staff, the public officials, and our parents. Yes, together we've navigated some significant challenges along the way. And I think we've implemented some practices, programs, and projects that will serve the kids for some time to come. I've said that we always get into this business to simply make a difference. When I interview, a couple of the greatest privileges I ever had in my life, I'll just tell you, is giving a first-time teacher their job, and also talking to either groups or kids, or just talking to kids. And when you interview a teacher, they'll simply say, why do you want to be a teacher? I just want to make a difference. So hopefully, my presence here and my absence here will mean something. If that's the case, I will be a happy man. I also just want to thank in particular the kids, because you're right, I don't mind telling you, they make my day every day, and they have done ever since I've been here, whether it's in the classroom, on the stage, on the athletic fields, in the cafeteria, or in Starbucks. They just make my day wherever I sort of bump into them. I'll remember everybody fondly around this table and the kids and the staff. And I know and look forward to the district's continued success. And I'm a proud member of the Blue Way family and always will be. So thank you for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the following, the minutes of the regular and special meetings held on June tenth, two thousand twenty five? Joanna makes a motion. Donna seconds. Any discussion? No? All in favor? That is unanimous. Robyn, I can't see you. You're good? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Gus. Okay, moving on to Board Committee reports. I think it was just Finance?
Yeah, last Thursday, we had a very quick kind of wrap-up meeting on the, on the year.
Okay, we'll hear more about that later.
Correct.
Moving on to Presentations, Discussions, Item seven A, we will discussion of possible action on the custodians contract. Ellen, you want to give a little overview? Rich?
Yes, Rich and Marge have participated through the spring here in bringing the custodial contract before this evening. It's a general wage increase of three point five, three and three. So it's under budget for a total cost of about two hundred and fifty thousand. The district employees have a twenty-five hundred and five thousand dollar deductible. That has been increased to three thousand and six thousand. Premium shares are at twenty-one, twenty-one and a half, and twenty-two. There are some language changes that are helpful to the district operationally. And with that, we're hoping the board will move forward to approve the contract.
Okay. And we had executive sessions about this earlier. Are there any questions at the table to ask? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the contracted agreement between the Darien Board of Education and the Darien Schools, School Custodians Union for the period July first, two thousand twenty five, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty eight?
Someone?
John's first. Donna's second. All in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
I just want to, if I may, just mention that, because like, like many of the other support staff, they're instrumental in terms of what they do. They're often the first people who are in the building with some of the staff who arrive and some of the kids who arrive. You'll know it when you see it whenever things aren't ready, so they do a fabulous job. And something that characterizes our district is the pride that people feel. That applies to our custodians as well. So I just want to recognize our custodians for all the time that they've put in over the years, particularly if they're listening to me, a shout-out during COVID. But thank them for the pride that they take in their own buildings and for their work ethic and wish them well.
Thank you. And we certainly see the hard work, so thank you to those. Okay, we'll move on to update on M M S and elementary schedules. Mrs. Jroller and Mrs. Demilles. Welcome, ladies.
So we said we would come back and just do the update of where we are, and this is what this is, just to give you a wee appraisal of where we are in the process and what some of our commitments were and how we deal with those.
All right. Good evening. I am excited to share with you that we've been very busy and also finding a good deal of success in working through our schedule for next year. I wanted to start by summarizing for you some of the action steps that we've taken since we last spoke in the fall. Our work has been grounded in professional development, focused on being data-informed, keeping in mind finishing up priorities and commitments that we made to the board, and also collaborating with various stakeholders. So as you can see here, we have participated in Aspen training across eight different sessions that involves learning and updating different rules, rooms, courses, all sorts of attributes related to the schedule that enabled the engine use. I want to thank Jackie Miller for her partnership and network. We utilized course requests from our students and recommendations from our teachers in order to project out sections. And based on that, look at average class sizes. From there, we looked at four different teaming models to maintain the team while also meeting the priorities. We sought feedback from our team leaders, from our department chairs. We also connected with building representatives for our teachers union. And then Sarah Lemaley has worked very closely to analyze special education services, to project caseloads and co-taught ratios. When we took all of that information, we, with those four teaming models, presented those to members of the Cabinet, ultimately arriving at one model that we felt best implemented all of those priorities on top of all of that data that we reviewed. As we moved forward in finalizing the master schedule, we looked at how to most effectively utilize our classroom spaces and calibrate room assignments to maximize teaming and minimize teachers being across multiple rooms. We've collaborated with our interventionists to plan in advance for our students who receive M T S S and M L supports, and then ultimately participated in a week of full-time coaching with Aspen's professional schedule builders so that we could integrate all of that learning and work to get us to the point of having a master schedule. I wanted to remind that when we were last here, we had shared three commitments or goals for this master schedule, and those were to reduce the number of English, math, science, social studies classes to five or fewer that were at twenty-five. We are on track to meet that objective. We spoke about reducing the number of sections that were not rainbow by design, meaning core academic sections that were meant to be on team to instances fewer than a hundred. We're also on track to meet that and to address P L C time. That has been a big driver in how we have designed the master schedule, and we have had great success in enabling that time for our teachers, both to meet within their departmental P L Cs and also in their teams. At the same time, it is important to our community to preserve the team model, proactively structure for that known student need, in particular to maintain our co-taught sections below fifty percent with enough wiggle room, is the official term, to start the year and address student needs as they evolve over the course of the year. We are working to balance across teams and sections, allocate our F T E, our teachers, to optimize class size based on feedback from our class size report in the fall. Make sure that we're scheduling teachers for five classes, getting those P L Cs for all of our disciplines, allocating rooms to teams and disciplines to reduce teacher room changes during the school day, and giving our teachers schedules and caseloads before the summer. You'll notice that there are things that are in yellow, and those are the things that we are on track to do, whereas the green are already accomplished. I will highlight that we have already shared our teachers' schedules with them at the last day of school, which is well in advance of last year. And we're on track to share caseloads with our special education teachers by July one so that they have plenty of time, if they choose to start that work over the summer, to be prepared to greet our students on the first day of school. So this is a visual representation of the teaming model that we are going to move forward with for next year based on all of that data. When we looked at how to maximize balance across our average class size, we'll also create that space for the co-taught ratios to be as balanced as possible. We will have three teams in eighth grade next year, and then four teams in both seventh grade and sixth grade. As you can see, there is a teal team in both sixth and seventh grade. What that means is there are teachers who will be teal teachers. They will have some sections that are sixth-grade classes and some sections that are seventh-grade classes. So there will be a six teal and a seven teal. Both of those teams will be smaller than the other teams in those grade levels, but they will maintain all of the same functions of the team, allowing the teachers to meet regularly, to discuss student need proficiency, to participate fully in team days with the other peers, so we don't anticipate a change in student experience based on that. And it allows us to meet those goals of keeping the number of classes at twenty-five lower and scheduling comfortably for our co-taught sections. So that's the team model that we have built our master schedule using, and it has been implemented historically at Middlesex as one of a variety of different team models that the building has utilized. So over the summer, we are going to finish hand scheduling. While most of our students do have complete schedules already, we do need to finish scheduling, particularly some of our special education programming. We are going to take another review through. We're keeping track of any students who are placed into a rainbow class so that we can double-check before the first day of school to make sure that it's absolutely necessary for them to be in a rainbow class. We are going to check section balance to aim for as balanced courses and as balanced teams as possible. And then we will communicate schedules to our students and families in August ahead of the new school year.
Thank you, guys. Maybe we'll stop and do middle school questions first and then move on to elementary? Okay, we'll open up to, well, actually, I'll just, I'll start. So with the, when you said you explored four teaming models, why did you choose this one versus the other? What are the strengths of this one versus the others that you looked at?
The, the major drivers in that decision were looking at that average class size. If we had gone with a strictly four teams in the sixth grade, three teams in the seventh grade, three teams in the eighth grade, which is what we had anticipated when we spoke in the fall, that would have put our average class size in seventh grade at twenty-three about. And with an average class size of twenty-three, it would have been very hard to maintain five or fewer sections at twenty-five, just realistically, given the other constraints on the schedule. Layered on top of that, this year, we have found that in that current grade, the current sixth graders who will be seventh graders, there have been some co-taught sections that have been close to fifty percent over the course of the year, and that has been tight. It's forced some students off-team. And so we want to be building a schedule that really maximizes the number of co-taught sections that we have available to our students. So those were the two data drivers that narrowed us down to two different models of allocating our F T E creatively. The other model that we looked at did not allow for teachers to participate meaningfully in team meetings about the students they were teaching. It had more of a floating rainbow teachers, not rainbow kids model. And because we, one of the elements of the team model that we prioritize and it's connected to our M T S S work is the ability for teachers to talk about students on a regular basis to make sure that they are known and cared for and have their needs met. This teaming model allows us to do that.
Thank you. Open up to questions. John?
So when you said you used the teal model previously, when was the last time it was used?
I don't know the last time it was used as a year, but I do know that when I presented the models to our team leaders, some of them who've been here for a long time said, I guess we've done this one before and that one before and that one before. So there's been a variety.
So it was regularly, regularly used between two thousand eight, two thousand fourteen. It's just. Okay, thanks for.
Okay. Thank you. I want to be clear, this is not that there are four teams in the sixth grade and four teams in the seventh grade. It's that there's three and a half in each. So that's important to note. This sixth-grade class that's coming in is one of the biggest we've had in a long time. We're having elementary fifth grades that have five sections. So this is concerning to me. You know, we used to have four teams per grade, and now no one has even four teams, not even an exceptionally large class. So I find it hard to believe that that's not going to impact student experience. And specifically, I haven't heard anything tonight about how a teacher who is teaching on a teal team across two grade levels, how will they, how will that affect their planning time? How will they be talking with seventh-grade teachers and sixth-grade teachers?
Yeah, great question. I've looked to make sure that those teachers' team meeting and P L C meetings wrap around in such a way that they'll be able to participate in both so that they will have access to common planning time with their grade-level colleagues in the same way that any other teacher of that building or of that subject would be able to.
So how are we not asking something more of those teachers, that they go to two team meeting plannings per week or per cycle? Are they teaching less classes? Are they, are we under some sort of contractual obligation to pay them? Like, how does that work out?
Yep. So they're also going to be going to team meetings and teaching five classes, the same as their colleagues. They will have, instead of doing two meetings with a single grade level, they will do one meeting with each of those grade levels. The people that were having, take on the opportunity of two classes at two grade levels are people who are more experienced teachers, and so we're confident in their ability to do that work.
So it's less planning time for those teachers?
It is less than some of their peers, but I would note that it's still an increase over what we've had this past year. And I would also note that there are other teachers, such as our math teachers, who have multiple props. And so it's not uncommon for teachers to have multiple courses to prop for.
So to Katie's point about the size, do you have a sense of how many children will be on the team, each team?
Yep. So for the teal specifically?
Or just in general, like it's the sixth grade?
Sure. In the sixth grade, we're looking at between ninety and a hundred on the red, orange, and silver team, and then around sixty on the teal team.
Okay.
And similarly, in the blue, gold, and purple, we'll be in that closer to a hundred space with the teal being closer to forty.
So then that means currently they're like eighty to ninety, right? They're a little bit larger than they are now? Am I correct in that?
They're currently between ninety and a hundred.
Oh, they are? Okay. Sorry. Joanna?
Yeah, just to piggyback on top of that. When you have, I find this to be inequitable, an inequitable experience between all of our students within the sixth grade and within the seventh grade, because you're going to have students having their school within a school feeling of being a hundred kids for three teams and then only sixty kids for one team. They're going to be in class with the same kids much more often. When even things, when you have like a, you know, school culture building opportunity by team, you know, the teal team's going to be the little team. And so I, I would like to know, I mean, I find that to be very troubling. I'm actually quite disappointed by this model. The other thing is, you know, when we first were introduced to this model back in two thousand twenty-four as one of the possibilities, when we first engaged the consultant, it was my understanding that the, one of the main reasons they didn't want to do this model is because it would impact P L C time significantly. So how are you going to, just how are you going to rectify that?
So in this past school year and for some of the preceding school years, our teachers have been having P L C time during their lunch period. So that has been, as we know, a contractual violation and also not an optimal work experience for our teachers. One of the constraints that we've added to an already quite constraint late in master schedule is making sure that every teacher is able to participate in a P L C that is a full forty minutes separate from lunch. So we have, I have hand-placed out the team meetings over several periods, as well as the P L Cs over several periods so that teachers have access to those, not during periods four, five, or six, or whenever their grade level is at lunch. All of those teal teachers will still have access to that, and it's an increase in the time that they will not be doing that during their lunch period, and they'll have the opportunity to attend their team meeting, just as any other teacher would, and also participate in P L C.
When you come back to us in the fall to discuss this more, could we see that schedule? Also, when you come back to us in the fall, I would really like to see the impact this past year has had on these bigger teams. It seems like there's a lot more, both anecdotally and, you know, notified by our superintendent, a lot more incidences that, with the bigger teams, that we weren't having as often previously. We've always had difficulties, but I feel like these bigger teams, you hear anecdotally that there's a lot more misbehavior in general. We've had such bad misbehavior that it's risen up to the level of concerning the whole district. So if we get to see data on last year versus the previous years, like in-class detentions, after-class detentions, you know, not people, but just generalities, things like that.
I'm just going to play devil's advocate a little bit on those smaller teal teams. I think there could, there very well could be an educational benefit for some children to have a smaller community and a smaller team. When you place children on teams, do you consider that? And, you know, do you consider those that may, may be more comfortable within a smaller peer group? Is that how you're placing bids, or how do you choose who goes where?
Even before you answer that question, I would just counter that why are those sixty kids get the better experience of a smaller class?
I don't know that it's a better, for, for different kids, different situations are, are better. So different kids could operate differently. Okay, so, okay. Like, how do you, how do you decide who goes on what team?
The places that we are deciding which kids are on a team are in assigning caseloads to case managers to make sure that we have balanced caseloads and balanced ratios across our special education co-taught classes and services. There are some instances where we have students who, for different supportive measures, reasons, needs to be specifically with or not with another peer, so those students have been hand-placed on teams. There are some students whose specific combination of course requests, Aspen happens to say it's not going to work on any other team, this one has to go here. For the most part, we are not handpicking which team a child goes on. We're relying on this Aspen server to say what the most optimal experience is for that child in order to get the most number of their requests in, while still meeting those targets of keeping students not in rainbow classes and with the classes not at twenty-five.
Okay. So I would like to learn more a little bit about what your, the experience, your new experience with Aspen. So now that you know so much more about it, you know, there's been talk about, is Aspen the right program? Now that you've had more training and understand it better, what, what are your thoughts on it? Has it been helpful?
I would say it has been helpful. I wouldn't be in a position to answer how it compares to any other tool, because I haven't used any other tool. But I have found that in maximizing the mechanisms that that engine does provide us, we were able to build our master schedule and get our students into the courses that they wanted.
Okay. Greg?
Just adding on to some of the requests that Joanna was asking about for this stage. Would it be helpful, or would it be possible to just add the number of students for the next time you come back to us? Just the number of students in each one of the teams, maybe the number of teachers in each one of the teams? I don't know if there's, like, if you divvy up like special ed-type stuff in each one of the teams, and then it'd be great to see what it is, what you're looking at for this coming year, and then what would it look like last year with all those same numbers?
Katie?
Yeah, Greg, I wanted to piggyback on that to you. I want to say, though, that I think that it's very, very important, as we look at this data, that we have to absolutely go back to at least the twenty-three, twenty-four school, because that is before we reduced personnel at M M S. That's when we had four teams was the standard. That was the experience that, that most of us are familiar with. This past year has been very messy, so simply putting a model in front of us today, saying that it's better than the mess of the year before is not really what I'm looking for. So in order to understand the data, we need to see where these personnel changes have impacted scheduling, P L Cs, lunches, and definitely students. I think that Greg makes a very good point about size of the teams, about caseloads on the teams, the co-teaching. I think really all the points that have been hit today would be very helpful to see over at least.
So I think you'll come back in the fall and let us know how, how it's going.
Let's just ask one question. Do we know what the size? Question. Do we know what the size of the incoming sixth grade class is? It's the whole grade?
It's the biggest.
No, but do we know what it stands at now? I mean, kids.
Three ninety. It's projected to be three seventy-five.
Okay. Sorry, just three seventy-five doesn't add up to ninety to a hundred for three teams and sixty for a teal team. That makes it a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and seventy-five.
So three seventy-five, projection.
Thank you, because I know some kids do go to private school, so I was just curious. But you did, we were told in the fall, I I don't know who said it, but that after three sixty, that tips to a fourteen.
Yep, and we've been watching very closely where that enrollment has been with students either going to private school or enrolling in. Uh, and so I could, I will come back to you with what exactly the numbers are on each of the teams.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to elementary, please.
Okay, in elementary, our team has been focused on um music and art, and this is what we have accomplished this year. So there is no change to elementary vocal music for the current year. We've used our itinerant staff. Um, the revised curriculum has been fully implemented in K three and will be continued to update in grades four or five, using the same philosophy and curriculum. In ELP, our music um will also be continue um just as it has in the past. For instrumental music, we are going back to a five-day schedule based on feedback um and data. And we are also going back to before and after-school full band and orchestra rehearsals, rather than um using wind time for that. Instrumental music continues to be staffed by content area specialists using itinerant staffing. For elementary art, we're returning to a sixty-minute block, which eliminates the rotational art. Um, this is responsive to the curriculum. There's more in-depth opportunities for students. Um, they can use a variety of mediums and materials. And um the, our team has been able to develop a schedule with itinerants, travel and shared staff. There are two or fewer staff teaching at any given school. PLC time is provided across schools for the visual art teachers, and there are time built in for additional responsibilities, such as display, collaboration with teachers and the PTO to incorporate art in special events. There will also be um a consultant model with ELP. That is.
Yep, that's it. Questions, Joanna?
Um, just so our music. Our, uh, well, since it's still up there, are all five schools have an itinerant? Is, or do any schools have just one dedicated art teacher, or everything is itinerant?
I believe one of the five schools has has an art. Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Um, and then in order to go back to the five days a week for the instrumental, did we um need to hire another teacher, or we just?
No, utilizing the staff that we have.
Further questions? Robin, I can't see you, so just jump in if you have questions.
Um, yeah, I did have one question. Um, going, returning art to sixty minutes blocks and eliminating rotational art. How were we able to do this? Um, because I thought that that was initially a budget issue.
It was actually the same amount of total minutes, but we were utilizing the time differently. So teachers had um forty-five minute classes, and then there were ten additional rotational art periods. So the total number of of contact time for art was the same. But that one hour of of um art class gives the teachers just a more cohesive curriculum. They can do more with the students, so it's a preferred model.
So so for instrumental music and returning art to the sixty-minute uh blocks, sounds like it's a a better outcome, um, which is great news. I just was, I mean, it's great that we were able to figure that out. I just wanted to double check that, but thank you.
The team spent a lot of time, a lot of days on that.
Thank you. Further questions?
Thank you to Kate and the um Colleen in particular, and the members who support in the team uh for your work on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to further discussion of possible action on proposed changes to the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school district calendar.
So the information that that was uh included in the packet talked about some of the questions that the board had um at the previous meeting, some of it talked, addressed issues of planning. Um, what professional development days, what are we doing during the professional development days? Uh, what are some of the mandated uh trainings? So we we tried to address those in the questions. We tried to address uh, given you the full, what the PD plan is essentially for the year. Uh, we redid the the calendars, uh, so they numbered one, two and three. And if you just put up that, I mean, literally that's what you see there is is what what calendar one is, what calendar two is, and what calendar three is. Um, there was really no impact on the middle schools. Uh, so it really focuses, you really can take the high school out of it, other than moving it back to from Friday to Monday to Monday to Friday. Um, but it basically focuses on the elementary uh schools for the the literacy. That's the main focus. And so one of them is Mondays for PLCs. Um, Fridays for PLCs with, both of those are, would be late arrivals essentially for uh the district or for K to three reading. And then the last one shows you specifically Fridays for PLCs and six uh early releases for PLCs that, and and we confined them to months that didn't have professional development. So that's kind of the, the, that still incorporates the uh HHR planning days that I think are important to plan for.
So thank you for, to everybody for listening to the community and to us and going back for another stab at this. Um, so just to reiterate, there's no change at all to the DHS plan as it's been for the past few years, with the exception that two of those PLC days will be on Mondays?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no change in the middle school?
Correct.
Um, and then, so there are six early dismissals, K to five on Fridays, or are those, are those on Fridays? Yep. And then two Monday later arrivals for all five schools.
Mm-hmm.
And then two later arrivals for HHR, two additional.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Questions about this option three? I think to me, it's a nice compromise, and it seems to um check the boxes for for the community members that have asked for Fridays and for us to limit it, limit the numbers. So um, to me, this makes sense, but I would like to open up to other people. Greg?
It it still doesn't seem, for me, it just, it still doesn't seem to address, like, we're just taking, we're we're reducing the number of days that kids are actually in school. That's what's happening.
Sarah. Hold on, let Greg finish.
We're reducing the learning for the kids. So like, that was my big ask last time, which is definitely not addressed by this. This has the same number of days. We just moved them around and made them beginning or end of the day. I I still have, I I looked through this before the meeting, and it did seem like there was some description in terms of like what these PLC days are being used for. And I think what was it? HMH is on here a bunch of times. Like, I do wonder why some of those days can't be used in place of these, and then you could take some of the I think it's yellow, take some of the yellows off of this, reduce from nine to, I don't know, five or something like that, and move the training for inter-reading from what was a yellow day into a green day, for example, in February twenty-third, move it into the thirteenth.
So the yellow days will also be uh K to, particularly for K to K to three reading, that they will be the regular like monthly, instead of the half day, that will be the K to three reading day. Greg, the PLC days are strictly for the high school per se, right? That's not, that hasn't changed over the last couple of years. Uh, the fact that I suggested move it to Monday is probably complicated to think around it, but the PLC days are the they, they're, they're the standard practice for the high school and have been for some time now. So I wouldn't, I would ask you not to get caught up in that one, because that's uh, that that's been a standard practice. It's just, yes, our, we're, we're reducing the days and we're reducing the time, but investing in the teachers is also I know it's like, I think, well, no, you have to have more time, but investing in the teachers in terms of uh this particular program, it it's just going to be invaluable to you, to the, to the students, and you're still meeting the the guidelines that we need to have for uh state compliance for a number of hours in a classroom and so on.
So, and sorry, I was, I had it backwards. Move the green, the late start into the yellow. So they, we have the yellow anyways. Why don't we, we move some of the greens into the yellow, so that we don't have the late starts?
The greens only for high school.
Sarah, Sarah?
Yeah.
Can I just make a comment? Um, the the high school PLC late arrival days has, have been in place for a number of years. And I think what the option three really does is that it does not add additional PLC days for the middle school, nor does it change anything at the high school that it already is happening. It only adds the six early dismissals on Fridays, which was in response to parents' feedback that they preferred Friday early dismissal as opposed to late arrival. And then the two Monday late arrivals are around breaks. So the reason that I thought that option three actually made sense was because it really was targeting the elementary grades, which were implementing the K through three literacy. I understand your point about trying to collapse PLC days, but generally the PLC days that we have had in place that are for the entire district have been in place for a number of years. And I I appreciate the detail that was provided to us about what those are being used for. But it, I personally think that it count, that the calendar three option allows the middle school and high school to basically have no change, and it's really targeting the PLCs just to help us within, with the K through three literacy, just for this one year, which I believe this is really only for a one-year timeframe, and the HHR moves unfortunately are not something that we can avoid. So I, in my mind, it it kind of served as a compromise.
Yeah. So if you can speak, I mean, can you speak to that one-year comment or?
What, well, this was designed for a one-year proposal. Uh, the biggest the, the biggest thing you want to do is get off to a a good start. You don't want an implementation dip, and an implementation dip typically takes place in the, in the first year. Uh, for, for professional development, you want to make sure that you have enough hours of professional development uh for the want of a better term to make a stick. This is regular. The reason we're not moving the the wheels, so to speak, is to give you a regular every month uh for the K to three reading. That there's a, there's a time in there that's going to be uh that they're going to be able to use. So you want, you want to start off strong.
Isn't inter-reading, the, the future of inter-reading is to roll it out, not just K two, three, it's also four or five. So there, this isn't just one year. You're gonna have to train those teachers as well.
But the biggest, but the biggest, the, the biggest impact that you want to make sure is you start strong. I mean, you have to build up the capacity of people. Now, you, when you build up the first year of capacity, then you have more people who have the capacity. So the first year is the most critical year. Let me say it like that.
Go ahead. Do you want to add anything?
So Greg, I think maybe you're, are you asking about the grades four and five?
Yeah.
Well, yeah. So um what I would say about that is we would do a similar process the way we did with, with looking at our grades K through three curriculum and resources as we did. As, I'm sorry, we would do that with grades four and five as we did with K through three. So we would engage in study. You know, so it's, it's premature to say if we would go with inter-reading, we would need to, we would need to engage into a study, look at all of our curricular resources, look at data, involve the staff and that. Um, we don't have an answer that will be making it shift with an actual resource. It could be just a curriculum shift.
No, I guess I'm just making the assumption that we, we've gone into inter-reading for K through three. State is mandating it. We're gonna have to go to the K four through five, so eventually we'll be in the same situation for four through five and have the same.
So the state is only mandating it um K through three, and that's interesting, right? That's why our approach has been right away to have a larger district steering committee that's actually preschool for grade twelve, so that we can keep an eye on that and then articulate any curriculum shifts that we need to make instructional assessment shifts as we go. So we'll learn a great deal from our implementation this year that will further inform um any shifts that we may need to make in grades four through five, but this is the only mandated change right now.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I think that we could do a much better job at having much more efficient discussions um than we are right now. Um, I don't love option three. I think that we could do better. Um, however, we are running out of time, and I will vote for it today. I would like to say that, again, I feel strongly that we need to have a review of professional development across the district in the coming year. Um, and last, um, out of pure frustration of um miscommunication and understanding, I think the point that Greg was trying to make is that there are three, six, but three yellow days on the calendar where the entire school is closed to students. The three before school makes sense. Teachers have to set up the room and they have to get read. But there are three in the middle of the year that I think Greg's point is, what are they being used for? Why can't that be dedicated to K through three? So, so some of these things we should not be talking about in our third discussion of.
Do you want to quickly answer with those three or four?
So the plan for the November and the January day is in fact K through three. With regard to K through three literacy, will we work with HMH um reps and a complete focus on K through three literacy? Grades four through five, they'll be working with concentrated focus on writing.
So then, uh, okay, so then the, like, looking at the dates, I guess, when which I've tried, it's very hard to read the calendar from here, but the early dismissal days, some of those are very close to those other days, so why do we need them like right on top of each other?
They're not. Which ones are you looking at that look close?
Like the twelfth of September, isn't that?
That's an early dismissal and a PLC day for the high school. I'm sorry, twelfth, twelfth.
Like November fourth and November fourteenth.
It's also circled. Doesn't that mean that it's early?
Elementary school.
So the November fourth and November, the November fourteenth, don't forget, is not a K to three literacy day. That's a PLC day. It's, it's the wheels that, the wheels combined with the yellows essentially.
What we tried to do is I think exactly what you're looking for, really space the time so that we can um frontload each module for the K through three practitioners. So we did try to space them out so that at the beginning of the year, we can have a strong start. And then each of those other, they like look like little wheels, right? Those little um cobs in the other months that are noted with the green in the center. I know they're kind of hard to see, but those are intended to be for a rollout of the module and to look at data. And you want to do that intermittently as, as different assessments are administered.
Okay. Further questions?
Yeah, that's just, that's typical.
Robin, do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Then um we will go to um, if a motion to approve the proposed changes, which is this calendar three um for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-fifth school district calendar. John, seconded by Janice.
I, I second.
I'm sorry. Okay. All those are paper? That is John, Sarah, Joanna, Maroni, Katie.
Robin.
Robin, thank you. Opposed? Greg and Dave, anyone abstaining? That's everybody. Okay, so that passes. Thank you. Moving on to discussions, sorry, further discussion of possible action on the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven calendar.
So uh you have the CM calendar for twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, not the CM as what we've just discussed, CM is previously shared with the board. Uh, this gets completed the same way as this year's got completed this year, but the, the major dates for, excuse me, uh, the holidays, vacations and so on are on it. Uh, so we put that together. We did have a student who came and and talked about other uh religious holidays, uh faith holidays. So we put together a wee uh chart. Um, thanks uh to Kessy for putting this together for us. It shows you the holiday that are uh various districts either honor or maybe respect in a way of no homework or no tests on the other days or otherwise. Um, we did get a, uh, ours got Tom to just uh opine a little bit on and give a wee bit of a perspective on the days that we have to do um that occur in holidays in January and December. And also to take into consideration uh things like how how much of an impact would a particular holiday have on the school's operational run? Uh, so uh that's, that's a big thing that people take under consideration. Is it going to be disruptive to the school um to close it? Because the board has to make a decision if there's uh essentially a hundred people or a hundred families. Is that enough to close the school system down or otherwise? I do think that um the nuances of this, I do actually was, think that for some of these holidays, I think there's room to be clear about when kids are uh honoring these holidays, that whether it's tests or well, whether it's tests or otherwise, right? Uh, we could be considered of uh homework and so on. I know it's difficult, but um, there, there could be cases where we honor that a wee bit more consciously, right, and deliberately. Um, but I do think just even in having this discussion and even getting a wee bit of uh feedback from Chip in a good one, I think we're at least paying uh due respect to the request that was made. I think you need a bit, a wee bit more deliberation. I think you need a bit, a wee bit more deliberation moving forward on this and reflection because it's not just quite as straightforward as, as it could appear to be. I, I would suggest that the, the board continue to engage in the discussion in, in some forum, it could be the repeat, it could be so, so it next year, but that's.
Okay. Thank you for that. So in, in looking at this, in reading the memo that Tom put together, Mike, the, first of all, thank you to the student that, that brought this to our attention. And I think that I, that was, that was brave and I'm glad, glad that she did that. I am curious what, how do we more formulate, formalize that procedure of, you know, if you are celebrating a, a holiday, you know, how do teachers know not to do that? So is there, is this, is this a formal policy? Is this a directive by the administration? What, what?
It could be, it could be either or.
Okay. Do you, have you, have you seen this done in other districts and in, in what form?
Uh, in, in some forms, it's done culturally. Maybe in some smaller districts and so on, that it's, it's easier to handle in some ways, right? But you could certainly, you could certainly through, uh, do it through policy if you wanted to do that.
Okay.
Margie, leaning into that discussion there or?
So the only thing I'm familiar with is in my previous district, we sent out, um, a memo to the teachers at the beginning of the year that says students may be celebrating a holiday on this day, no homework, no tests. And, you know, we were as inclusive as possible about the holidays that we listed.
Okay. So I mean, I, I see that happening, but how does that, you know, the, the, I love red pajamas religion? Like, how do you, where, where do you delineate, how do you delineate? Is that?
Yeah.
I guess the discussion you would have to ask.
Okay. Katie?
Sorry, that's a lot to come back from. I have a question about board procedure, and this is not, uh, particular to the conversation, but I, I am curious about how much, what sort of cost we incurred by having this memo from, um, shipment and Goodman.
The memo was already existing, they just updated the dates and checked the law. We're not the only district asking for it.
Okay, thank you. So my reason in asking is that, um, I, I want to make sure that the board is following its current process, its proper processes, and that it's not, um, incurring costs and, um, ordering work based on a single request and that it is, um, the appropriate number, or board numbers that are inquiring.
Do we, do we, can we, or do we know the percentage of students who are certain religions?
I, I don't have that percentage of.
And we, I don't know that we can, we can ask or not. I don't know if that's, so, so I think the question for me and, and I think it was brave and thank you for the student bringing it in. And I think it, we have to, I'm trying to be as fair as possible. And I don't know what, what the demographics are to determine how fair we need to be. But I think, I like this idea of at least averting the school that certain students may be celebrating a religious holiday and, and we shouldn't be penalizing them because they believe in a different religion than majority of the students in town. However, I also think there needs to be an, an addition to that, that it shouldn't just be the day of the holiday, it should be the day after the holiday too, because who wants to study during the holiday? For your exam the next day? So to me, I would just add that little caveat in there, but.
Or it could be the day before, right?
I would also add, like, no extracurricular, um.
Sports or?
Yeah, like sometimes if you miss, I mean, I had this exact thing happen to me growing up. You know, I didn't go to school on certain holidays and then I wasn't allowed to play in the soccer game. So just to make sure it's inclusive across all extracurricular activities and academics.
So is this something that the board would like policy to look at? Or should we talk this further with, do we want to add this to the retreat? How do we want to handle this? Anyone have a preference?
I, I wouldn't personally throw it on the retreat. Have a quick discussion on where we should be.
That's all, okay. All right.
What specifically are we talking about?
Just how to handle religious holidays and, and, you know, do we, do we direct the administration to be, have their teachers be aware of, you know, not, not assigning work for Ed or Ramadan or whatever.
Cause there's a note here, sorry. There's a note here that says not day off, but recognize in the holidays to make staff aware. So I'd like to understand kind of how that recognition is made, how that communication, right, in other districts?
Yep.
How it's fairly applied as well.
So I'm wondering, and I guess Amy, this would fall to you, is there any way that you could do a little it tell before the retreat and just what other, if other districts have a memo like that or something? Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Okay, so that's that, um, are we voting on that?
Is that different, is that different to us now? Is that different because it's sort of somewhere?
Well, it is more of the, if, if administration directs our teachers, if there's something tangible that we can see how a district handles that. Okay, so there's possible action on the twenty twenty.
I think that's this, there's a little, there's a, there's a table.
Right, but I mean, like, is there a memo, like, can we, is there, does, does West March at the Westport had a said here, teachers, these are the dates, don't, you don't have work assigned. I was just curious.
How do they, how do they, the administration communicate?
Okay, yeah, that, that sounds like a really slippery slope, but.
I would just like to see what other, what other districts have that. But if it's going to be a lot, then, but. Okay, we need to vote on this twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school district calendar. Is there any questions or concerns about the way this calendar is set up? No, okay. So may I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school district calendar? Joanna, seconded by John, all those in favor? That is.
Robinson, favor.
Thank you, that is unanimous. Okay, moving on to discussions of revisions of the approved Board master agenda, February through August. Alan.
Uh, I think you have the, the colored copied version, so we, you know, we've been keeping track of what we've been adding, what we've been taking off. And, um, we've, we've, um, tried to build in the parking lot, some of the parking lot topics into the, uh, retreat discussion. We can talk about that when we get that far. But this is just a working copy of where we are with the meetings.
Any questions on this? And as Alan alluded to, I think some of this does fall into the retreat conversation, so. Joanna?
Just some of the parking lot conversations are, are saying they should be happening this summer. Clearly, they will not be happening this summer. So we, that, you know, the next man of the calendar, her back to us would be, and it, it will be after, after Adam's time, of course. But it would be nice to have those actually in place in months, like the DEI, SEL, gifted and talented. Um, anything that was supposed to have happened, but the two meetings over the summer that no longer will be, that they're actually in place.
Can we just move them into the twenty-second meeting?
Well, there isn't enough time. I mean, there's only, it would be, it would be done by the end of the day.
Yeah. Um, you know, I think there will be a conversation about the strategic plan during the retreat. So I think some of that can get folded into that a little bit. But I don't think it can be a, a explicit conversation. Also in deference to Dr. Byrne, who will have just been here for ten days, like those are pretty, you know, those three topics require some, you know, historical knowledge and, and, you know, and knowing what actually goes on here. So, uh, I would like to give him a little time to get up to speed. Katie?
It's been requested multiple times that, uh, discussion on typewriting, um, on typing and handwriting be added to the curriculum committee meeting. I don't see that on this list. Um, additionally, um, the PLC discussion, I do not believe should just be a discussion in curriculum. I think that we need to, um, I would like to request to have a full review in front of the board. Not just an update on.
Should we, I, I think what I'm hearing you saying is that you would like an expanded, not just PLC, but PD in general, an overarching conversation. So whether that comes, you know, there's been a lot of overlay with that and budget. Is there, you know, I'm just curious about what timing, what do you think makes sense for there? Or is that something that we need to have Dr. Burns and put on as well?
I would think we would block this.
Okay. But we could, we could certainly broaden that topic to be professional development in general, not just the PLCs. Okay. Anything else on this master agenda?
I, I'll just say that we didn't avoid putting these topics on, right? Um, the discussion with our executive leadership team of the board and myself, as we talked, tried to draft a, some, at least a draft of the summer treat was to build those topics into the strategic plan discussion. If the board showed desire to pull them out, then, I, I'm, so we could.
All right, moving on to the first reading and discussion on proposed schedule of the twenty twenty-six regular Board of Education meetings and subcommittee meetings.
I just asked you, this is just a, I, I just asked you to look at the, uh, calendar review of the meetings. So the Saturday, the tenth and of, uh, January, just note on April, that's a different, that's a different date than April that we would normally have too. So just pointing those out.
Why did, why were those changed?
What was that one?
Um, the April one, it's because of break. April break is during the second Tuesday.
Gotcha.
And January tenth, um, last year, the retreat was right off the break, off the holiday break. And I believe that was a comment that maybe we should move it to the following week.
Okay.
But those are up for discussion.
Okay, yeah, this is a first read, so we can contemplate and then come back next time. All right, moving on to the annual report on donations, Rich.
Uh, so we received a hundred and five thousand thirty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents in donations, uh, this year from various community stakeholders. Uh, this does not include any in-kind donations that don't pass through our system or paid directly by an outside organization. Uh, we do want to highlight some, um, athletics received over fifty thousand dollars from, uh, various parents, booster clubs, youth groups. We did receive the twenty-five thousand dollar donation for the high school library. Um, and as we are every year, we're very thankful for all the donations that support the school system.
Thank you. Do you have a sense of, it, um, you know, it says that this is, these don't include in-kind donations or the PTOs? Do you have any sense of what that larger bucket is? Do you know, like, at the PTOs spend?
We'd have to reach out to each individual one that don't have that, um, offhand. A lot of times the PTOs will like sponsor, like a guest offer, for example, at the elementary schools. Um, those are typically, you know, in that five hundred, two thousand dollar range.
Yeah.
Uh, but there are other items that they obviously support.
I mean, I did, just, just to highlight that that's a significant donation and, and thank you to the PTOs for doing that. Katie?
Um, I would appreciate seeing, uh, the next time we do this, a, um, a representation of, um, like perhaps a pie chart of how much is going to athletics, how much is going to the arts? How much is going to, within athletics, how much is going to boys' teams versus girls' teams, specific teams? I think that, um, I, I appreciate this list and seeing it together, but being able to disaggregate it into the percentages of donations that are going to specific places would be very helpful.
Okay. Further comments? All right, thank you for all these donations to those of you that donated. All right, onward, discussion of, on May twenty twenty-five, financial report and possible action on the proposed budget transfers, Rich.
Uh, so this is the financial report through May, and we are forecasting a positive balance of five hundred and twenty-seven thousand thirteen dollars. Uh, the general education RCs are forecasted at just over fifteen thousand. Uh, while the special education RCs are forecasted at just over five thousand dollars. Uh, salaries are forecasted at a positive thirteen thousand dollars. Uh, we do have salary savings of just over ten thousand and some small savings in building subs and in clubs and councils. Uh, operating is a positive two hundred and ninety-three thousand. Uh, this is largely due to some, um, savings in that district tuition and then a small balance available in special and legal. Um, fixed remains a small positive balance of thirteen hundred dollars in payroll taxes. And then we did get a couple of reimbursements from firm of the workers' compensation. Uh, revenue is forecasted at a positive two hundred and eighteen thousand sixty. Uh, this is driven largely by the additional forty million that was provided by the state legislature for excess cost reimbursement. We did receive that final reimbursement this week, and so all monies that we received, uh, that is owed for excess costs. Uh, and there are no transfers for considerations on.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments about the financial report? Joanna?
Rich, at the, uh, financial committee meeting, I asked, uh, if we needed to proactively vote to have our surplus, uh, send it back to the town. Could you just explain, everybody, would you explain to me?
Sure. Uh, so the board has until June thirtieth to spend or obligate their money. Um, anything that's not spent or obligated by June thirtieth does go back to the town. So the process is it does take a couple of months to close out the books. Typically, we'll try to close out that first week in August. And then there's what's called the Town Board of Ed reconciliation, where we reconcile our accounts, uh, within the town. And then the town will make an entry on their side of the books to move that, uh, money into the general fund, whatever that balances.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Since there are no budget transfers, we will not have any action. All right. Now, moving on to the draft agenda for this summer retreat. So Alan, Jill, Robin and I worked this past Friday to brainstorm and come up with some ideas. Alan, you want to?
Yeah, so, uh, we reviewed what we've done in the past a little bit, um, and respecting, uh, that, that Dr. Byrne is coming on board. I'll say that it's a wee bit of a higher level discussion. And I'm not saying there's not specificity there, but, um, but it's just a higher level of discussion of, of how the board would like to operate with Dr. Byrne and, uh, him understanding some of the, what the board would like to see or otherwise and sort of flushing that out to start with. So, um, this was just to try and get the wheels going a little bit and try and do a wee bit of preparation and transition planning. It looks like, uh, we will, I'm hopeful to, that prior to this, it will be, uh, well, not prior. You can have an executive session before a meeting, during a meeting or after a meeting. This is right at the start of the meeting. We anticipate that, uh, uh, there would be, uh, an interview of the, um, director, new director of, uh, elementary education. And hopefully with the appointment of that director in the actual, uh, open meeting, regular meeting. So the first part of it is really to do the, uh, the interview and, um, hopefully with an appointment. You don't have to make the appointment afterwards, but obviously, the sooner we do, the sooner that person has to give his or her thirty-day notice and, uh, so that the sooner that happens, uh, the better. So it, it's a wee bit the same as it has been in nature, so I'll go through legal updates and board operations. That includes Board of Ed's social media state mandates, uh, with, uh, Tom Mooney. I'm still waiting for the confirmation from Tom, uh, he's in, on a cruise. So that's sort of, the social media part is, he, he should be able to, uh, comment and, and get direction on that. The board evaluation, that's a process that you've gone through before. And, um, it says to be determined, uh, Patrice, uh, the executive director cannot do it, she's in Africa. Uh, but Nick Cruz, who has been here once before, can do it. I would suggest that in order for that to happen, the questionnaire survey has to be sent out. And if people could get it back to, by the week that Dr. Byrne is here, that would be helpful because it would, it would, it would help him and, um, help that process go through. Uh, there was only one thing changed here, which was communications. That was an opportunity Dr. Byrne wanted to add into that, uh, discussion. So this is, this, this traditionally the, the self-evaluation the board goes through. A preliminary discussion on the FY twenty-seven budget in the past, certainly the past year, we were more specific with what are the priorities, what, what are things that are coming, uh, what are you going to have in the budget type thing? Identify those areas, that's, I, I would say that's just a wee bit early in order. I think you'd have to have the discussion of how the board, the budget's going to go, what the board's opinions of that are, Dr. Byrne's opinion, just as he enters in. Discussion on long-term fiscal planning can include things like technology, Harvey planning for technology, non-lapse account. It gives an opportunity to have that general discussion. And the same of the goals in the strategic plan, um, as opposed to coming back with what are the proposed goals for the board or what are the proposed goals for strategic? Are there any, um, further directions in the strategic plan? It gives the opportunity for the board to just have that discourse, both with Cabinet and also, uh, with the new superintendent. The enrollment is, uh, as it has always been, that level specificity, and we can, uh, we'll, we'll be able to do that. Uh, enrollment seems to be going fine, uh, we haven't broke any other sections at this point, and we hope, we don't anticipate that. And, uh, the proposed board schedule, so. Uh, that's a draft, it's, it's just open for a draft. And you're also having the, the, uh, teacher negotiations that start on August fifth. So the members who are on the, that committee, you may be able to utilize Tom, um, in a non-meeting situation before this to discuss about processes and how the board would, would work, uh, around the negotiation process. Uh, so that's something you, you might want to think about. The, and the board has to meet with the Board of Finance. It could be all, everybody, or it could be as many people are available or not. The date that, uh, I've solicited a couple of dates from the board of finance, one of their dates that, uh, is most helpful to most of their board is July twenty-fifth, I don't know what people's availability of that is. I'm just trying to, just a nice at night because it's, it's just hard to track with the date and, uh, trying to get a date. We just need to, you just need to do that, um, because that's a statutory requirement. I don't know if people are free that date or could do it.
Do you have time?
I think it was the inner liner.
Okay. Um, we can send out an email, Robin, you can send out an email about if people's availability for that, please.
Okay, uh, Dr. Adley, there were other dates as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah, there was, there was a couple of other, there were a couple of other dates, um, that weren't as lucrative to the actual process of getting, uh, putting this in a timeline, but, um, I can certainly set, send them all. Right, just put the preferred date. Yes, the preferred, we'll just put the preferred date.
Okay.
Right, but Dr. Adley, just one question, um, just to clarify, because I think if, if. Um, right, but Dr. Adley, just one question, um, just to clarify, because I think if, if a number of Board of Ed members are not able to attend on the preferred date that the Board of Finance is proposing, I, could we also potentially talk about the other two options, I believe that? Okay.
I'll include those. Uh, Robin, I'll do that for you. I'll send those out.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Um, so just some general, we'd love some general feedback about this. Like, I have a couple bullets here that I wrote, like the preliminary discussion on the, the FY twenty seven budget. To echo what Alan said, that's gonna have to be a very high-level conversation, just because Dr. Byrne literally will have just gotten his feet wet. We don't have a teacher's contract, which isn't a major piece of that contract, so that, you know, of the budget, so that's a huge unknown. Um, but I envision that conversation being more about the calendar, the cadence, the, you know, how to, how can we improve upon what we did this year? Greg?
Um, yeah, I have a few thoughts on the, on this agenda. Um, it seems like we've got a few items on here that are I, I, I feel like would be better suited for just like regular Board of Ed meetings, for example, number seven, like appointment of the director of elementary. Like the update on enrollment, like that stuff seems like it's just ordinary stuff. I feel like the, this full day should be devoted to more high-level strategic conversation. On here, we've got only thirty minutes dedicated to the Board of Education Goals and Strategic Plan for twenty twenty five, twenty six. I think that should be like the bulk of the day. I'm surprised it's not the bulk of the day, and we should have sub topics within that of what we should be focusing on for the day versus just glossing over it thirty minutes.
So to your point on the first two, like this is the only, only meeting in July, and we need to get those things done, so.
Yeah, we're not talking, it's twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. The next meeting is in, during the school year. So how are we framing what we're gonna be focusing on?
No, no, the, the Director of Elementary Education and the, the other, like, the meeting dates.
Oh, you're saying those?
I mean, those are, those are quick, that we have to get done before.
Sure, so make those five minutes and make some of these other more.
Yeah, we usually don't adhere to the time.
Joanna?
Um, I would like to see us have a discussion on the long-term fiscal planning and all the possible things that that entails before we talk about the fiscal year twenty seven at all. Um, I know we might not talk specifics, but we always accidentally end up talking about specifics. So I'd really like for the board to talk about what we envision um our goals are um, and all these other thornier issues that we've been discussing this year. I'd like to have the board discuss that before we talk about um, anything, and then specifically this.
So your idea would be to move B before A?
Yes.
Anyone? Good, Dave?
Uh, I don't know if it's appropriate for here, but you have five, ten-minute conversation tops, just to hear from uh Dr. Burns in terms of entry plan. I don't even need to know like thirty, sixty, ninety, which is kind of like broad, hey, you know, glad to be here and gonna do X, Y, Z.
Yeah, so I mean, I kind of, he's got that superintendent's report, so.
That'd be great.
It, yeah, I think that's. And Greg, I, I hear your point about that. That thirty minutes is not a lot enough time for that, so we can, we can go back to think about how we how we distribute the time. Um.
On your point on the budget, I think, look, like, getting clear on like what that process is gonna look like, and I don't know if guys are gonna have thoughts on that or not, but.
Yeah. Uh, I think it'd be interesting to see what, you know, what he's done in the past and what, you know.
Absolutely.
Um, and now I don't, we're not ready to move on to our next agenda topic, but I envision the handbook coming back to this meeting, and I think uh, Dr. Byrne's request of communications, that to me seems to be a nice entry point for that to be discussed. Other comments, Robin?
Um, I, I agree, we need to spend more time on the strategic kind of piece, unfortunately, just especially with the budget items. We had talked about more strategic budget initiatives in the past, but unfortunately, since Dr. Byrne is new and he might have other thoughts, I think, you know, in some ways, as much as we'd like to spend a lot more time on the strategy piece, we're gonna have to, I think, to some extent, take our lead from him and have a high-level discussion of what he would like to focus on and then kind of move from there. But I agree with Greg that more rather than less time should be spent, so that we really can talk about more long-term fiscal planning and strategic kind of items. And, and again, this is really a draft at this point, and anyone who has additional suggestions or um things that they would like to see on here, please um definitely send them so that we can um further amend this.
Is there anything glaringly missing that anybody is?
I, I know, uh, just one thing, Sarah, I know Jill had mentioned that she was gonna speak with Dr. Byrne uh also about special education planning and things like that, because the costs are rising significantly. So I don't know the outcome of that discussion, but in my mind, that could potentially be part of what we would be talking about with him is, as an item that also would be a budget-related discussion as well, or a long-term fiscal planning, so um, again, this is a draft, and I think we need to also wait for some feedback as well from, from him, too.
Okay, thanks. All right, we'll move on to.
Just, just one thing, that legal update, and I think there's a couple outstanding things um legally that we might want to get an update on. Thinking like the high school lights, that kind of, we haven't heard anything on that, so if you could put in a little bit of an exec session, that they could just, anything legally outstanding that we get an update on.
Do, do we have anything, or do we need to do anything in this for the update on the new superintendent's search? I can't remember about that other schedule.
Well, I mean, we, we don't really have anything to announce yet, because we have, we still have to work, meet individually with, with them and then come up with, so nothing's really gonna kick off until the fall for that, except for our individual meetings, which I need to set up, or we need to set up for the, over the next couple of months. Um, okay, moving on to the handbook discussion. Um, as I mentioned, this is a, not the last time we will talk about this handbook, because we, I think we should talk about it um, in more depth on the, on the twenty second, but this, Alan, do you, since I, I don't know where this came, you know, the steps of, where, what are we looking at?
All right, so this is, this, this is the draft of the handbook. Thank you to Katie, and um uh, we have tried to sort of coordinate and sort of or, and sort of help organize a little bit. Um, so that's what we've done. Any sort of highlights or a couple of other things are there for, I've got some questions about. Um, I took a wee few liberties here and there, but not excessively so. Um, and if, if if you know any of them, you can certainly comment on them and be happy to uh talk about them, but perhaps for some people, this is a this is maybe a first time, so even though we've looked at it, come back and, and made some changes, so I don't know, Katie, if you wanna go through it with me, or I'm happy to, to touch base with a couple of issues, um, or a couple of topics.
Thank you. I um left the notes at home. Um, so I don't have um my specific talking points in front of me. I'm happy to obviously have any conversations and ask any questions about this. Um, to Sarah's um question about how this came about, the board has not had a handbook, um, and we've had an individual onboarding process when members are first elected. Um, but there's not really a resource for board members to go to about how things work, or um even some of the informal processes um, outside of our policies, of course, which are on um the website. Um, and after attending a CAPE conference, um there was an example of one that was posted. Um, I think it actually won a communication award um from the Vernon School District. Um, and Dr. Adley very kindly was able to facilitate us getting a copy of that to use as kind of a roadmap for what we might include. Um, I think that there's a lot of good information in here. Um, I think that there are a few things that still need to be developed. Um, but that's sort of the um generation of, um, the genesis of how, how it began.
Well, just, uh, we, we did pay recognition to Vernon on page one, page ten. Uh, it's highlighted, um, be expected to kids, uh, the student reps to be expected to attend all the Board of Education meetings. There's a, there's a conflict there, because they're not expected to attend all of them, so we just have to work through that conflict. Uh, when a committee chairperson is absent, I think that um, that might, uh, what are we, that's the next page, page eleven. Uh, needs to be fleshed out, because I think that refers to, primarily referring to you, if it's a subcommittee, I call it a subcommittee.
Sure.
Subcommittee of a, of a chair's absent, who runs a meeting, just to be, just to clarify that. I think that's what it is, right?
Okay.
Uh, then page fourteen, uh, reporting concerns, uh, I inadvertently the top of that, you can see, see policy ninety one seventy.
Yeah.
Uh, that should be down beside ninety one eighty. Uh,
Oh.
So those should be uh together, because those are the two policies uh for removal of a board officer or censorship. Um, those are essentially the two things that you can do. You can't remove somebody from the board. Um, but those are the two that, that specifically address those, so I'll move ninety one seventy down.
I'm sorry, Alan, I can just jump in. This is an area that I had flagged um as um as an area that I thought we could build out a bit more, because the policies are um very prescriptive, um, and I don't think it really addresses um some of the more day-to-day things in terms of like, what do I do if I have a concern? And I had actually spoken to someone um at CAPE um asking for guidance. Um, Jill and I had spoken about this too, whether it was appropriate to ask Shipman and Goodman. Um, but again, because the policies are more about the legal statutes, and this is more about what's the right protocol and chain of communication. CAPE um had helped advise me, and I had drafted a paragraph. Um, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me. But it essentially kind of lays out, you know, that your initial step, if you have a concern, is to speak with the board chair. Um, and then beyond that, what if the board chair is the problem? Then who do you speak to? What if, you know, you speak to the board chair, but it doesn't get, it's basically the exact same thing that we have within our schools, right? Like where it's classroom teacher, and then to administration, chain of communication, exactly. So I do think that that is an important piece um that we should revisit, and I'm happy to share um some of the language um that was drafted uh via email.
So actually, right under that section is the section that um Jessica uh from Shipman actually suggested that we put in. That was, that was her contribution, as you may recall, we asked her to take a look at it. Uh, so pages fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen uh were Jessica's contributions. I didn't have any other, I didn't have any other um uh, changes uh to it at a March evening, I'll say. I want to thank Cassie for going forward, the, the edit, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So CAPE's got a great, I mean, they have a whole section in the handbook, but you know, when I was the new board member, it was provided to me. I mean, do, did you guys look at that, or? I mean, it's, I, I feel like this is pretty redundant to what I remember from the CAPE board member handbook that they gave. New board member, it's called new board member handbook, actually.
I think the value of this is that it's specific to Darian, and it is a one-stop shop. So this has all of Darian's policies linked in it. It has resources linked in it. It has um acronyms, it has um a note from the chair, which is something that we should discuss on the twenty second also about does that get updated every year? Also, the handbook, how often does that get updated? Does it follow a policy um cycle, cycle? So I think what's valuable about this, and CAPE is a great resource, and it's linked in here. Um, if people don't look at it, I encourage them to. Um, but I envision this being something that we could print potentially a limited number of copies, but also have as a digital resource. That is, when I have a question about something, when I'm uncertain about something, this is where I go, and it's specific to Darian.
Yeah, I think there's value. I mean, there's, there's new t, new board members that, you know, it's, it's helpful. Um, I have heard from a couple of board members that it's a little maybe concerning, it's too strong a word, but to, to hard code the language within the handbook instead of just including the link. Because if the policy gets updated or whatever, what are people's thoughts on that, Dave?
Um, Yeah, I mean, there's probably a way to do it. Publishing software, not a big thing. I guess the real question I had on this, and like, I like the Robert's Rules cheat sheet, that was nice, so thank you. Um, but, you know, a lot of what's in here, as you mentioned, you know, some of the very prescriptive in the nine thousand series, dealing with board operations. I mean, that comes from statute or town ordinance. I mean, we don't have a lot of wiggle room there.
Yeah.
And so I, I hear the notion of this is like what to do when you're a new board member, or what you want to do over time. It's nice to have, this is kind of like an FAQ. But I don't really know where this sits in terms of precedent and what's the impact. So if we put something in here that's like you should try this, and you want to try something else, like, do you lose your board sub-chair seat because you didn't follow this handbook? And I, I, I don't really know how that's handled, so I think that's maybe a question for Tom, but to me, I, I don't know where this sits in sort of the, the chain of what controls how we operate.
So Alan, did you say the pages fifteen, sixteen, and seven came from Shipman, or is that, did that come from, was that newly generated?
Uh, yes, the legal responsibilities is that it started at the uh, Freedom of Information Act, through those couple of pages.
Like, there's, you know, communications with the superintendent, communications with staff, like, all that came from Jessica?
Maybe, maybe there's just like a disclosure at the beginning of this that's needed to just say, like, the board is governed by the board policies, to your point, where like those supersede anything that's in this, no matter what. I don't know. I'm just making that up, but you're the attorney, I'm not an attorney.
I guess, I guess, you know, you have plenty of situations where, like, you have security stuff, you have the law, you have the rule, then you have the documentation, then you have the guidance, but you know, guidance isn't really binding, so it's just kind of a thought.
I like the idea of having something that like pulls everything together. I mean, there's, I think there's other things we could probably add to this. Even like the strategic plan, people may not understand that you do that every five years.
Right.
It's a full process, and you've updated, and you're working on the old strategic plan. When you, when you show, when you up, you know, when you enter the board, you're working on the old strategic plan, there'll be a new one at some point, like, that stuff. Um, and like, I think like, revisit, like, even putting in here, like, here's how often this handbook will be updated, for example, I don't know, that could be in there.
Okay.
I think it serves as a nation.
Yeah, hold on, Robin.
Uh, board member coming on, board is a crucial resource.
Yes. Robin?
Um, and, and thank you, Katie. I think this is a really good resource, and it's nice to have everything in one place. I guess some of my feedback, and this gets to some of what Dave was talking about as well, is that the hard coding texts from existing policies, as opposed to just including a link to say, you know, to find out more about this, you know, do this link. And I know you have links in here, but my one concern I have is that that would end up creating essentially double work to keep things both updated when really our policies are what govern us, so that's just one, one comment. And then on the, the communications piece, which is kind of toward the end, um, I know two policy links were included, but those policies do not actually include any of the, the bullet points that are included here about you know, communications with community or staff, or with superintendent, or information sharing, and um I, I, I think the board is governed by our policies, and specifically, for instance, the social media bullet point that's at the very end. Um, we don't currently have a social media for the board member policy. So, I mean, these are just questions that I have, because I think the handbook is really useful, but ultimately, I think our policy committee needs to um determine if there are things that we are missing that we might want to have a policy for that would be helpful. For instance, if there are questions that we have, then, then maybe some of this potentially could be looked at further by the policy committee in areas where there might be questions about how, how things should operate, and, and that's something that I think our policy committee might have more thoughts about.
So again.
On a formal process.
Sorry, I mean, um, I think this falls nicely into the conversation that we'll have on the twenty second about communication, um, and then if there's questions for Tom, we could, you know, think about that on the twenty second as well. So.
I agree with that, yeah.
Yes, we good on this one? Okay, Marge, personnel report, please.
Uh, did I, did try, did we have that on the?
Well, it's on, it's not explicitly called out.
On the uh?
It's not explicitly called out. It could be.
Uh, do you want?
Yeah, maybe, do you want to have the handbook explicitly called out on the agenda? Yeah, that's okay. Okay, sorry, Marge.
Nope, we're in the middle of hiring season, and um it's challenging this year, but so far, so good. But there's a real teacher shortage.
Are you, where are you seeing the shortages?
Special education.
Um, how was our resignations this year comparatively?
They're less if you're so far, right?
They're low, it's about twenty five.
I'm sorry?
They're low, it's about twenty five.
Twenty five teachers. And how many administrators?
The two, just, just two.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Uh, thank you for your reminder, just, I'm, I'm at the point that I, not pointing out, pointing out, but just a reminder. Lunch is on your own for, like, technically for the board at the retreat, that's his breakfast, I mean, just, I'm just saying, because.
Yep, okay, we got it.
Will the water fountains be high?
Nope.
So it's a quick question. I don't know, I'm just taking the temperature of the room here, like, I kind of enjoy Tom Mooney's little. It's a quick question, I don't know, I'm just taking the temperature of the room here, like, I kind of enjoy Tom Mooney's little hypos and, you know, geeking out, but does anybody else, do we need to do those, move on, or leave a little less of that this year?
Do let's skip those.
The
Wait, one question, are you talking about at the board retreat?
Yes.
I am, yes.
Um, I, I thought that was something that had intended to also cover, and I'm sorry, I just lost the agenda, sorry about that.
Sorry, Dave, you were saying, let's not talk about the new laws, you were just saying, let's not do.
No, he usually does the regulatory update, which I think is valuable for us to know what's coming, so we can prepare for Hartford, because some of these will have budgetary implications, they'll have curriculum implications. But then he does these nice little scenarios, like little Johnny's mom comes to you and says X, Y, Z, what do you do? They're great, like I can geek out and do those, that's fun, but it's not really great use of everybody's time, so I enjoy them, but if everyone else like to do a little less, I'm having to see and dial down.
I'm okay with a little less.
We can, Robin and Jill can work with Tom on, on what he's gonna do. All right, so follow up.
But Sarah, just, he, I, I think it was also the intent to cover the Board of Ed's social media and also state mandates, which are, I think Tom is also going to be used for some of that too, which gets into, I think, some policy discussion as well, but I think there was more, yeah.
Okay, follow-up action items, we did clean up this agenda. What else was, were we adding? The holidays, yeah, that's coming back to on the twenty second. Okay. All right, Cass, public comment, please.
Good evening, if anybody in person or online would like to participate in public comment, please approach the podium or use the raised hand icon. Please state your name and address for the record, and please note that you'll have up to three minutes comment. We have no raised hands at this time.
All right, may I have a motion to adjourn Dr. Adley's last meeting?